At seven o'clock.
All right.
Okay, all right. Would you call roll please?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Chris Crowley.
Here.
Edwin King. Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
John Cost. Vivian Diggs. Garfield Parker.
Here.
Roger McKinley. Charles Williams.
Here.
Heidi Wilkins, Corey.
Here.
I thank you for coming. Would you stand for invocation, please? Mr. Williams, would you lead us in the pledge afterwards?
My fellow, I thank you tonight for allowing us to meet one more time to do the business of this community. We thank you for guiding and directing our path. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to say good evening to everyone. We're going to move to the approval of minutes from the February... From the February 13th. Lost my glasses.
Given that Heidi went through it with a fine-toothed comb, okay, I will defer to her on whether she wants to approve it.
Did you find out what it was she found?
I saw the email.
I just, there was, the attendees were incorrect.
Right.
It was little stuff.
Yeah, okay.
Not anything substantive, but if it's going on the record books for public record...
You're right.
Okay, so did you have something?
I already, Stuart already took care of it and sent out new ones, so.
Yeah.
I would move that they be approved as...
Second. Second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved for the minutes. Commissioners' comments? Anybody? Commissioners' comments? All righty. Staff?
No comment.
Tonight Stuart is not with us. We hope he's, I hope he's doing, feeling better, so he will not be with us tonight. Okay, any comments from the, from the community? Oh, okay. I'd like to, before, before we start, I'd like to add one thing to the work session. We have three items on there, and I'd like to add a fourth thing, and that is a report coming from the CIP, from the CIP Committee, that gave an update on what's going on with that. Okay? That'll be our number four. There are no public hearings scheduled for tonight, so we'll get right into the work session items and, and see how far we can get. All right, does anybody have anything else, comments or anything? All right. Our work and... You can go ahead. You go ahead, you got it.
The first item on the work session is to finalize the solar energy facilities zoning ordinance. Two revisions are on the last page of the ordinance, and I think everybody has hard copies. If not, they're...
Change on page one as well.
Correct, sorry.
Okay, what, what was that?
There's a minor change on page one as well, and D2 setback moving from 25 to 50 feet.
On page two, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
If you look at subpart seven, there's a requirement that somebody purchase and install a Knox box. I have no idea what that is. I think that's an autocorrect problem.
No, it's actually the name of the box that's used for the fire departments to get access, isn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's a legit, that's what they call them. To get into any kind of facility, they call them Knox boxes.
Thought he was going for lockbox and it autocorrected.
I'm sure it's a play on that, but no, it's...
All right.
Do you want to read through the, the changes?
Yes, please.
On page one, you'll know that it was changed from requiring a minimum setback of 25 feet to 50 feet, along with a 200-foot setback from the edge of the right-of-way of a state maintained road that could be adjusted per the conditions of a particular site. On the last page of the ordinance, there was a revision regarding the decommissioning plan shall be updated and filed with the county after two years of operation to account for changed circumstances, including inflation by a Virginia licensed engineer the county's choosing with the cost to revise the plan being borne by the project applicant. Thereafter, the decommissioning plan shall be updated and filed with the county every five years. There was a big discussion that, that we had versus two versus five, but... And then on E, regarding the bonding, after each decommissioning plan review, if the cost of decommission has increased, the surety bond shall be increased by the same amount shown in the newly revised decommissioning plan. Now, it's just added just to help clarify...
Okay.
What we expect from the bond when evaluated.
Okay. Any questions?
Production of changes?
Second.
Motion is moved, and then second, are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Do we have anybody on the line tonight? All right, okay, thank you. All right?
One question. I guess, and it depends on how the planning commission feels, but, but whether or not we're ready for a motion to take this solar ordinance to a public hearing.
Okay, how does the commission feel about that?
What else would we do besides what we've done for the last two years?
Should we take a trip to Maui to celebrate first?
I say send it on for public hearing.
Okay, so Stuart, go ahead and schedule that per the board.
In the memorandum, it was part of the package tonight, there, the board approved our request to schedule public hearings on the office buildings that were discussed in the zoning. Perhaps we could combine those two?
If we want to combine them in the same motion, absolutely. Or we could wait until we get to the work session.
We should, it won't be confusing. It shouldn't be, but...
I mean, we, we can make it work.
Okay.
Well, I think the one on our office buildings is going to be extremely straightforward. I don't think there's any way that anybody would object to it.
You'd advertise them separately and just have them at the same meeting?
Correct.
It's worth noting, as part of the CIP process too, that we're required to have a public hearing, and that's going to need to happen soon. So, the question is, do we put three together, or do we defer these to... The CIP one is time sensitive.
We definitely need to take care of that, because that just holds up the whole works.
Right. So, maybe we do the budget of the CIP separate from the other two, and we do the CIP one first, subject to approval of the commission.
I, I would like to do that separate, so... And do them both, do the, do it all on the same night, but...
I don't, what, what kind of attendance do we get for CIP public hearings? I mean, last year we had none.
Very little.
That's what I'm, so...
I see.
And I think the same would be true of the office building issue. The only one that might generate some interest is the solar energy, and it's been publicly heard before, so we should be winding down on those comments.
I would suggest that if we have them all, all three on the same night, we lead off with CIP while people's attention is fresh.
Right.
Okay.
Prefer them sedated?
Yeah.
I mean, it's your plan.
Exactly.
So, we've taken care of one, two, three already?
It appears that way. Well, not two, we haven't taken care of two.
Two is a whole nother ball of wax.
It's comprehensive plan.
Okay.
But it looks like one, three, and there's still more to do on four.
Okay.
But we have...
So, for right now, we'll go to number two.
Yeah, I think we have to fulfill, I think Heidi had a motion to public hearing, and we were just looking for a second.
A second.
All right, we're talking about the addressing the solar energy facilities?
Correct, moving that to a public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay.
And if we could do the same for office buildings, just to...
Okay, it was seconded, is that all right with everybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we do the CIP the same night?
Yeah, can we get motions for the office buildings, and then we'll do the same thing for the CIP, just to make it...
Move to, move to have the meeting on the office buildings.
So, I'm not familiar with what the memo said from the board about the office buildings.
Just go forward.
Just...
Just go forward, no comment on the substance.
Fine.
Okay.
Sounds like a subrosa approval of your suggestive changes.
All right, well, I'd second your motion and for a public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, okay, it's going to be a busy night. Sounds like it's going to be a busy night.
One on, on the office buildings is a five-minute deal. I really do, just because...
I don't, I don't think either the CIP or the office building is going to generate. But, you know what, we...
All right, Philip. What's next?
Um, I think we can go ahead and, if Mr. Cost is willing to allow us to do the CIP as a work session.
Just a quick refreshers to the process here, you all created a subcommittee that Mr. Parker and Mr. Wilkins, Corey, and myself served on over the past few weeks. We had the great opportunity to meet with the four affected department heads and hear what they proposed, and we concluded our discussions yesterday. So, the way this process works is the subcommittee will make a series of recommendations, which you'll see, and I'll go through, not in a lot of detail. We, the planning commission, then have to agree to move those forward to a public hearing if we agree with the content, and then at that point, we forward the recommendations, and that's all we're making at this point, is recommendations to the board of supervisors, and their goal is to have this up for their hearing in their May meeting, which is why there's a sense of urgency here. Part of the challenge in doing this is that we don't really know how much money is available, and no one's willing to tell us at this point, you know, it's a political give and take, you know how that works. So, we reviewed everything that was brought before us with the department heads, and in many cases, their staff, to understand the details. In most cases, we accepted everything, perhaps changed the ranking of it a bit. There were a couple of things we deferred, but one of the other things we did this year, I understand, I wasn't part of it in the past, is we also asked the departments to come in and talk about the out years, because if you think about what's happened in the last 12 months, we had a boiler blow up at school, at the elementary school, we had a water main, sewage main break in Cockroach Creek, and are there other landmines, so to speak, out there that are going to blow up, things that are going to break? And there's a lot, and as a result, for example, most of the vehicles that the county owns, the school buses, the sheriff's cars, the, the work vehicles, almost all of them have six-figure mileage on them already, some of them much as a quarter of a million miles. So, some of this stuff is not sustainable. The school buildings are getting onto a full generation old at this point, there's equipment and things that are in radical need of replacement. I'm not sure the board of supervisors is going to be willing to suggest that we can do them all at one time, so what we try to do is formulate a plan to do, build a schedule, at least see a bigger picture of what all is out there, and then let the board of supervisors decide, how much do you want to do now and how much in the future? So, that is the process. Any questions about process at this point?
Does any of it mandate it? I mean, is there anything we've got to do?
Well, it depends on, again, we as the board of supervisors, they are the decision-maker. There's a number of things that are so broken that they've been cited by the state. We got OSHA violation at the school, we've got DEQ violations at one of the schools, there's a variety of different things out there. Now, we mark those as urgent, but again, it's the board of supervisors' decision. But there are things that clearly need to be done, and there are clearly things that are about to break.
Was there any inquiry made, particularly with relation to school board requests?
Yeah.
About alternative sources of funding?
Yeah, that's all covered here as well. Again, with the understanding that there is something called a school building...
School construction.
School construction fund, but we don't know how much is in it. What the school board, the Board of Education itself did with the working with the school superintendent, is rank order all of their requests. They, they literally went through one to 13 and said, this is our rank ordering, to their credit. Now, we didn't agree with all of those ranks, but nonetheless, they, they took the effort to do that. They thought at the time, within the amount of money available, of course, that was, as near as I could tell, largely happening before the boiler blew up, so some of that money has literally evaporated.
We had copies of that list at some point.
You'll see it right here, but we'll get you the whole spreadsheet, absolutely.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, absolutely, of course. So, if you don't mind, I'm going to walk you through this. I've tried to make this as readable as possible, but just so, I'm going to walk across the headings here, but just so you know, when we get to the rankings, A is urgent, it's got to be done now, B is necessary, which is virtually everything on here, and C is kind of nice to have if we had a lot of money. We don't have a lot of those up here. So, across the, the top of the spreadsheet here, this is the ranking that the agency brought in themselves. Almost all of them are Bs and As, they are all Bs and As. This next row is our rank, the subcommittees. Now, again, we lose control today, it becomes the planning commission, so these will become your rankings either tonight or as part of the public hearing. The next column is the year that the agency requested the money for. So, for example, if we look at EMS, they brought four things in, but they spread them over four years, to their credit. They're looking ahead, but they also had their own fund sources. So, then the item that we're talking about, a bit more description, the amount they requested, whether it was previously budgeted, because there's some of these projects are actually carryforwards from previous years, and FY '24 approved not funded means it was approved by the board of supervisors last fiscal year, but they didn't put any money in for it. Then we get to the fiscal years themselves, this is not a great... And I'm not a defense lawyer. So, FY '25, '26, '27, '28, well, we went out five years. Now, this is the crucial column, this is the one where we've said yes and funded it. Our recommendation is to fund it.
This case, could I... I take it that is, you agreed to fund it from the standpoint of available funds within the CIP?
We don't know what available funds are. This is our recommendation to the board of supervisors within their budget process.
Okay, but there is an amount in, within the budget set aside for capital improvements. Do you know what that amount was?
And it's not clear that it's holding anyway, because of the... Plus, you have these school construction funds. You also have, in the case of EMS, they, they have a, they, they build their people they transport, so they have a fund of cash. None of these are coming out of county funds.
Okay, all right.
So, it, at the very bottom, I won't scroll down right now, I'm going to have a summary, self-funded school construction funds and then county general funds, so that you can see how they all add up.
Okay.
And Mr. Haney was part of the discussions except yesterday, but what we're doing at this point, very supportive, but of course, crunch time will be in May when they decide how much money actually is left. Okay? Again, I'm not going to go through these in detail, just know a quick summary, in case of EMS is very simple. They have vehicles, they have a lot of miles, and they're getting over, for next year or for this coming fiscal year, they've asked for a replacement of a emergency response vehicle. The estimated cost, based on estimates they've gotten, is $100,000 to do that. If we, if the board of supervisors approve that, that means they get to place the order and go through the procurement process. As I understand, delivery of these things is actually probably several years down the road. So, in the case of EMS, again, these are all self-funded, there's a number of things that they have on here, but they're looking ahead and looking at, at the useful life of their equipment, what needs to be replaced, when. This was very straightforward, this was the easy one, that's why we put it at the top of the list, okay? Any of my colleagues who were part of the discussion, have any...
That, that's fine.
Okay. Now, the next one is sanitation, and here, they have claimed something called a capital reserve fund. It is not entirely clear what they mean by that, because it's county money. But again, to their credit, they came in with, I think, seven items. Several spread out over time, they recognized where things are beginning to fall apart, they've actually looked at some things where they can actually save money by making an investment. So, for the first year, there's three things that they've asked for, and the two of them are marked very urgent, and one is less so, is a replacement of a truck with a lot of miles on it. It's a, basically an F-250 kind of sized truck, just a work truck, so they need to replace that. But there is something called a crutch lift station generator. I hope you guys can remember what that was for, but there's a, it, it has something to do with sanitation, movement of sanitation, and we don't want that breaking, they see that, that one's at risk at this point. And they've asked for $53,000, we agreed, okay? And there's more detail if we want. And then there's a, this one's an interesting one, in Calio, they want to have a, a, a building for the vacuum truck, this is for sucking the sewage out of wherever they suck the sewage out of. The problem right now is because this truck is sitting out in a parking lot, it's exposed to the elements, and so every time they use the truck, they have to go hose it out, wash it out, and do all sorts of things to it, extra maintenance that would not ordinarily be required if it were not, if it were in a more controlled environment. So, they like to basically build a small building to house this particular truck. They make a very compelling case, it's going to reduce the amount of staff hours, wear and tear on the vehicle, it will increase the amount of times that this sucking process can occur, because the, the truck will be more readily available. Trying not to be too graphic, it was just a ripe opportunity, but...
Where, where would it be kept, John?
Sorry?
Where would it be kept?
In your garage.
Yeah, I understand, but, I mean, Calio, Redville?
Calio.
At Calio?
Yeah.
There's no place at the bus garage or anything, which is kind of halfway between, where a vehicle like that could be stored?
My understanding is they only need it in Calio.
Okay.
They take it from Calio to Redville?
Correct.
That's my understanding, so all the work gets done in Calio.
It comes right back. Got it?
And then, as I said, the, the third item is simply a truck, they've got, they've got a number of vehicles, and, and to their credit, they're thinking through, what are the things that we need to replace? Here's another one scheduled for next year, they have a lot of work vehicles, all of them have at least 100,000 miles on, in some cases over 200,000. Okay? I'm not, again, I'm not going to go through the out years in this, because you'll get a chance to look at this in more detail with all the backup material, so let me just go down next to the sheriff's office. You can see some of the rest here, there's more things related, it's all related to sanitation. We get to the sheriff's office, we had a really good discussion with what he's trying to do. As with all the other vehicles in the county, he needs a couple more police cars, and they have not replaced them. They have 21 police cars, is that the right number, about 21? All of them have more than 100,000 miles on. Now, that's just miles. They actually have a tracking device on the vehicles to show the number of, the amount of runtime, and in some cases, they're, the equivalent of over, in most cases, they're equivalent of more than 200,000 miles, because they spend a lot of time sitting in the side of the road.
I thought it was 21 employees, 21 deputies. There's 21 deputies.
21 deputies, four detectives, and then senior management. So, what we've asked, their original request was just for $130,000 for two new vehicles, and just as with ambulances, ordering police cars and that sort of thing takes, has a long lead time to like, a lot of the auto companies, because of parts shortage and so forth, are not readily doing these things. At our encouragement, we decided, let's start looking at replacing all of them over time, so that they don't get further behind than they already are, and they're way behind. So, what we have proposed is, with a greater sense of urgency, we need to start replacing these vehicles. Two a year is what we're going to propose, and that will only begin to get us caught up after six or seven years. His original proposal then was to get a new system of cameras that would encompass body cameras and car cameras. Right now, they're sort of patchwork together. He thought through it as, as we were discussing it, and decided, for this year, the greater urgency is only to replace the body cameras, because those are the most visible things, and they're the most important parts of this. So, his proposal is to, for this year, is to, they, they've got a full proposal in from the company they use already for $117,000. He believes there's potential to get a grant from the US Department of Justice to cover half of that, up to $75,000. So, he's already begun that process to, to go for that. So, we believe that, that's a good thing. They have body cameras on each of the deputies that goes out in the field, which is currently 21 of them. The three of us strongly believe that he, the sheriff, and the, the major detectives, Alan Garland should have one as well, so we're going to encourage them to get 23. The four detectives don't need them, and, and that's not part of the proposal at this point. Now, he said he would put off the car cameras, we said, no, come back. So, he gave us an updated proposal just today for the in-car cameras, moved out to next year of an additional $200,000. They would be integrated and done by the same company. So, the way that works is not just that you have a camera in a car, but when you're a sheriff, when you're a deputy out there, you have your body camera on, it's downloading to the car camera, and that car camera then is connected back to the central data collection hub as the, sort of the, the router, and so that becomes an integral part of collecting that information that's on the camera, so that the deputy doesn't have to go back to the office and spend a whole lot of time manually doing all of that stuff. Ultimately, the in-car cameras become a really important cog in all of this, but the most urgent part is the body cameras, okay?
Wouldn't the in-car camera be new equipment on the replacement vehicles?
It would, that's right.
Same company?
Sorry?
It wouldn't come on vehicles.
No, they would have to be installed with vehicles, there would be new equipment, you're right.
Ford doesn't...
Oh, it does not come with the patrol?
No, it's not a Ford or Chevrolet issue, it's a Lola.
Right. And that brings us to our friends, is there anything on the sheriff's office, any questions? Again, he, he came in very well prepared, and then we get down to the schools. So, as I said, we've got, there's two groups of things in here, and they're kind of spread throughout based on the priorities. One is the stuff that's based on cool, school construction grants. Again, that was prioritized by the Board of Education, but then there's a number of other things that have been requested that were sort of outside this, where they're just assuming, hey, the school grant, the school construction grant wouldn't cover this anyway, so this is going to be out of that, but we need to do that. There were several things in here that all seemed worthwhile, but there are so many things that we just said, not this year. And the first one is that, is that they've given agency ranking of urgent to a new activity bus, and what you're talking about is a bus that seats about 20 kids for small teams, like golf, swimming, debate, yeah. So, the argument they're making is that by having an activity bus, it can be driven by a faculty member and not have to be, use the big yellow buses driven by somebody with a commercial driver's license. All well and good, it sounds great on paper for your operating budget, but when you've got a capital cost of $88,000, the, the numbers don't work. So, in part, it makes sense, but not this year. Our recommendation is, let them save up some money over the subsequent fiscal years and come at this again, so we are recommending not approving the activity bus. It's simply not as higher priority as a number of other things on the list, but there's a lot on this list.
The course of these discussions with school superintendent, was there any discussion about items to be cut within their existing budget to pay for some of these things?
That's not within our purview, but the work that Karen Peake is doing with the joint finance, the joint finance committee is looking at those things, there's a number of things that are already being proposed, but that's not within the CIP's purview.
I'd like just to bring it to the attention of the planning commission, that about $30,000 a year that the school board uses for lunches every time they have a meeting. They're the only board or commission in the county that does that. If they shifted money around within their own budget, some of this would be...
And I suspect the board of supervisors is going to require that. There were a number of things, there were a couple of things on here, if you look at column G that were previous budget, or, excuse me, column H, they were approved but not, the money was not approved. They basically told them, go back and buy it, that's where the, replace the existing concrete, concrete pavers at the entry point between the middle school and the high school. Pavers there instead of concrete, sidewalk, that are... Pavers there instead of concrete, sidewalk that are already an OSHA violation. We already know that. They approved replacing those last year, but they didn't fund them. I think, I wasn't part of that discussion, but I believe exactly to your point. Go figure out a way to pay for this. Now, in this case, we have recommended it be included. Again, we're going to go through the same exercise. I suspect the board of supervisors is going to do exactly as you're suggesting. That's not within our purview. And when I say our, I mean all of us, not just the three of us.
But I mean, there is a lot of rather glaring fat in their budget that could be redeployed for a more useful purpose.
I was in the economic development commission the other night about per pupil cost here in this county versus our neighboring county.
Well, this wouldn't necessarily drive down the cost per pupil.
That cost is the amount of funding available.
Yes. I mean, for example, last, within the last couple of years, they hired an athletic director. Nobody actually knows what this person does. That's 90,000 base plus 50%.
Maybe he can drive the activity bus.
Well, that'd be a step up as near as I can tell. All the schedule, all the things that an athletic director normally does were done by the coaches over the past, well, these many years. $150,000 later, I guess we got some schedules, but I want the job. You?
All right. Next is the bus camera system. Again, a high degree of urgency on their part. We're not convinced it is as urgent as they are. I think that the, for example, I personally think the sheriff's department is more important in this case. They want to update their cameras, surveillance on all buses. They said there's a number of cameras right now that are not working at all. Some they've kind of propped up. They have the light come on to give the students the impression they're working, but they're not. Anyway, so they've requested 98,000 and change for that and we agree. As with the sheriff's department, school buses in the same situation. These buses are ancient and they have, several of them have had their engines replaced. Many of them have more than 200,000 miles on them. They need a plan. There are 21 route buses and then there's vans and other vehicles. They have a huge fleet. We've recommended in planning for replacing two of them a year. There are, there are a lot of them. There we go, I'm sorry. Vans. Amongst their fleet, they have minivans that are used for a variety of small transportation needs. Transporting students to Richmond, special needs kids and other kinds of uses like that where they have to take kids off property. These are, they, I think right now, the snare's, we can tell they're using these in part for those small teams. But they, they're very, very old. They put in a relatively small number for a minivan here. Their intention is to replace one per year and they're looking to buying them used so that they're not, you know, spending the big buck to the minivan. Typically going the $50,000 range, not $20,000. So we finally come to the ones that have school construction funds available. We've already talked, the schools, they've already addressed the issue of the elementary school boiler replacement. They spent $175,000 on that. That drew on the limited pot of money that that is. We left that in there only for information purposes. No decisions required, no money. But if there is a school construction fund, whatever that amount is, has been reduced by $175,000. But it's also what prompts us to take a longer look at some of the infrastructure stuff that's out there that hasn't been attended to. Because there's a lot of stuff that's going to break. So the next one is the concrete pavers. I talked about that. You know, we'll see how the board of supervisors deals with that this year. Go down, scroll down a bit here. So there is a, the next one is a well. There is two wells in the school complex. Both of them have been cited by the Department of Economic, Environmental Quality as being very problematic. They're leaking into each other. So they want to close, abandon one of the wells and fix the other one. They're both down in the aquifers. There's two different aquifers under the school. One goes down to the first one, about 700 feet down the one. The second one goes down about 900 feet. They want to preserve one and fix it up. They've got that one marked as urgent. By the way, see, see that on the first column, A4. So everything is an A. That's urgent. This is priority four by the school board, just so you know. They've marked everything urgent. So we had to deal with that a little bit since it's been here. They've requested $653,000 and change, $654,000, to spread it out over a couple of years. So we're recommending approving half of that for now.
The well?
I'm sorry, I skipped a jump. I jumped on it. Yep. So you're right, we'll come back to that. So they've already set aside some money. It was budgeted and not approved. So what remains of that 450 request and 340, we're recommending taking a third of that again and continue to put money aside to be able to do that. And probably get back to the board of supervisors that figure out how to deal with the money you got.
Well, they're, they were, I don't know if they're proceeding with this, but they had announced that they were going to build an office building for the school board with $2 million of federal grant money, which could be used for multiple purposes, including some identified.
Isn't that the source of the school construction fund?
I don't know. I don't know. And I don't know what's happening with the school board building either. Pardon me? No, they were going to build a new building over on academic lane. Have they punted on that one?
There's no evidence of that in what they request.
Okay.
Apologize for screwing up the next one. So the next one is public school security integration. Right now, there's a separate system for the elementary school, from the high school, from the middle school. They're, they are running on a very old technology that they've got 80-some cameras scattered around. They're required by law to be piped into the principal's office and the assistant principal. What they want to do is put together a comprehensive security system that controls the doors, that brings all the security feeds into the same place. It also makes it accessible to the SRO and it connects it if there's a, you know, an active shooter incident or something large scale. The sheriff's office automatically contacted with geolocation services built into it to see what's happening where. So it's pretty cool. It's a lot of money.
How much are they talking about?
They're talking $654,000. So we're recommending that they take, begin to set the money aside and plan to do this in the next year after a couple of years of gathering the money to do this. We had discussions with them. They've been, they said they've got support from the sheriff. I told him I very much want to see them bring Major Garland into it as well because he has audiovisual and IT expertise and all of this stuff to make sure that in fact what they're doing is not just good for the schools, it's good for our law enforcement community as well. So that it actively works together and not just an isolated incident. So I think it's a worthwhile project, but it's the big ticket item on here. Next is the galvanized stairway to get to the roof of the elementary school. Right now, for them to take the equipment up there, they have to climb a ladder on the outside of the building, which is pretty hard to do because it's quite high up. That equipment's typically very heavy. They have proposed fabricating a galvanized stairway to make it easy. There's a lot of work that needs to be done up there because those, all of the equipment up there, the air conditioning equipment, which we'll talk about in a moment, is beginning to age pretty dramatically. So we agree that was funded, that was approved last year, but not funded. Up there because I think in, just in the interest of protecting our employees and the work they're doing to keep these buildings functioning, it's important.
Is there any illumination by any members of the board of supervisors as to why they weren't funded? I thought the HVAC thing was critical two years ago.
HVAC, there's more of that here. This is just getting to it.
Yeah. No, I understand.
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that. I don't remember it coming up. The next one is the athletic track repair at the high school. Let me just scroll down here. Really hard to do when you've got this thing behind you. So I don't know if you've ever been to the track. It's not a bad track. I used to run track, you know, a thousand years ago and it was really tough to do when you're wearing sandals that they gave you. So they want to replace the, this is row 34, remove all the existing rubberized surfaces. It's basically a paved track. It's a good track. It's good enough, in fact, in the district that our school's operating in that in fact they use it for large meets for the entire area, the entire region. Some of the other schools use it because it's a good quality track. But they don't last forever. As you may have noticed, it gets hot here sometimes. And so it needs to be replaced and they're proposing $259,000, $299,000 for that. The next one is also one that was approved in the past but not funded. This is for new flooring in the elementary school. It's original equipment. That school is, you know, more. You probably played on it when you were a little kid, right?
I was there when it was put in though.
Okay.
Well, that was approved out of the CIP two fiscal years ago.
It's in the school's construction funds now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that's the proposal is to use it for that. But again, it wasn't funded last year. It needs to be funded, in our opinion, and our recommendations to go forward. It's just wearing out.
Apparently the carpet in those rooms is carrying.
That's right.
I mean, you have.
Really hard.
Right.
Well, it's hard, it's dirty.
Row 36, this is something again, urgent eight. For them, we would make it be replaced as necessary. Replace the existing generator and switchgear with a new 125 kilowatt generator set in switchgear. It's just, this is not something covered by the school construction fund, but it is a generator. It is vital in event stop breaks around here. The next one is also somewhat controversial. This is the replacing or basically fixing up the elementary school playground. Heidi and I had a chance yesterday to visit with them. The original plan was to move the playground behind the school so it's less visible from the road. But they rethought that there's a variety of topographical issues that'll make that challenging. So what they're proposing to do is leave it where it is, but to tear out the entire surface area. Put it down basically like an astroturf, we've been using that phrase, kind of foam rubber kind of stuff to make it safer for the kids with drainage underneath. Because right now, there's a problem with water settling in it and it becomes very messy. You can see it when you go out there. So it would create more drainage. The other thing is that there's a number of pieces of playground equipment that are in really bad shape. There are literally caution tape around one of them because it's in such bad shape, it's been condemned. There are others that look like they should be and others that even if you, if your kid came in really dirty after playing in the mud for a couple of hours, you wouldn't let them get out of it. It's just so nasty looking. So there's equipment that needs to be replaced. What they would like to do in the summer is to take all the equipment, move even the stuff that's salvageable off onto the parking surface. Take this thing up, replace it, put the new surface back down and then put in some new equipment along with the salvageable parts of the old equipment.
Total cost for that?
$376,000.
Originally came in at a half a million and they've fine tuned it down to 376.
We put some pressure.
Drainage, it has to have new drainage.
Yeah, it's really bad. There's a number, so they use mulch right now and you can see in a number of places where clearly there hasn't been much mulch. And even, and as a result of the wear and tear, the water is settling there. So there's a number of pieces of playground equipment you couldn't even get to unless you're taking swimming lessons during, after a week.
25 years ago, it was acceptable, but now things have changed, so we don't do that anymore.
It becomes. We're talking about the fact, none of this crap even existed when we went to school.
Time, and yet you've lived through it.
Exactly. And we're here to make this happen.
Probably had lead-based paint on my crib too, so.
Item 810, bus garage. This is over on Avalon. They're complaining that the security fence is falling down and in fact it is. But apparently, we've not seen much. They raised an issue where apparently somebody was in the fencing area one night when one of the bus drivers dropped something off. There has, we asked them specifically, I mean, the main thing that happened, they've got equipment that's locked and you've got fuel storage for, you know, refilling the buses. They have locks on the fuel tanks, on the pumps and cameras. There have been known incidents as a fuel theft. So we don't think this is quite as urgent as some of the other things. They said that the problem with the fencing is largely in the back. I drive by, that's where I live, down that road. If it's in the back, the forestry is very dense back there. So if you're going to steal cans of fuel, good luck. If you're that industrious, get a job. So we're not recommending going forward with that one this year. We're recommending it go forward next year. The next item, A11, row 39, is the middle school gym floor. This is a typical basketball kind of arrangement and the surface is wearing out. It needs to be coated, repainted, sanded down and things like that. I was the chairman of the Board of Education of a Lutheran school in Detroit a long time ago. We had to go through this as well. You reach a point where they're so worn out that there's a risk of slivers for kids sliding on while playing basketball and it's one of the things that are not good. So this does need to be maintained. This is original equipment as well. So I don't know, how long ago was the middle school built?
Got to be 20, 20 years.
Useful life of a gym floor is ten or less.
Yeah.
And with all these things, we pushed it down the road, we pushed it down the road and you just can't push certain things anymore. It's just like the AC units. There are more than, almost 20 of them, I guess?
I think there's 14.
14 of them. And after 20 years of use, anything mechanical will break down. And we just have not, well, even though we've had other problems come along, that we didn't maintain it. And now it's back, it's back again. You've got the fix to maintain.
That's the last two items. Row 40, A12, this is a new truck service truck. Originally, they thought about for snowplow because we haven't had much snow around here. And even if we do, the schools are closed. We kind of pushed that one out and said, not this year. And then finally, back to the air conditioning. They had requested $450,000 to replace four of the air conditioning. There's 14 of them and they all have to be replaced. These are all original equipment. We basically said they're working. It's not mission critical right now.
HVAC units or are these air conditioners?
Air conditioning.
Want 100,000 per?
130, I think.
20 was for each of them. The 450 was to replace two, two larger ones at 220 apiece.
Because they're not all that big, but those are the big ones, yeah.
I think it might be useful to get an opinion from Richard. That sounds really, really.
Yeah, he was there. He was there.
Sounds really high to me, but.
But in any case, we recommend not doing it this year. Again, in the interest of money, but begin to budget for all of them to be replaced over time. So no money being appropriated here. So let me go down to the bottom line here.
What's their total request, soup to nuts?
Never added it up.
Got to be in the millions, right?
Oh, it's less than two.
It's less than two.
Yeah.
And we're not recommending funding all of that. And much of it's being funded from the school construction.
And so here's how the numbers break down. So first of all, by year, here's what the requests were after we made these changes. So it, you know, starts at next year, fiscal '26, over $2 million. But here's where we're at for right this year. We're recommending $2.79 million, of which 100,000 is EMS self-funded, 1.278 is school construction grants. The sanitation has something called capital reserve funds. We don't think that's a real thing, but it's about 260. And generally, new county money, including for some schools that are not covered by school construction.
I think the capital reserve fund that the sanitation departments have told them about is things that were approved last year and appropriated and have, they just haven't done the deal yet.
So the money's there.
That's my understanding. That's what I thought Mr. Woolard was saying.
Any questions about any of that? So, you know, just reminder, what this step, we're done with our part of the process. The next step is we, the committee, commission get to make the decision, is this okay? And then go to public hearing. Again, the board of supervisors wants this on their agenda.
Again, can we get copies of the?
Of course.
Okay.
And I would just add that there's not a lot, there's nothing new in there. It's all deferred maintenance and obsolete computer. You know, the security systems are obsolete. They can't even fix the cam, some of the cameras, they can't.
The activity bus is new, but that.
Right, but we didn't. But of what we've, what we're proposing to be appropriated and funded, it's basically deferred maintenance.
Yep.
And obsolescence. We have to deal with that, especially on security systems.
So the well, the 600 and some thousand, that's a repair and not a replacement?
The well?
Yeah.
It's a total of 450.
It's to replace, it's to fix one well and to basically seal off the other. It's to replace, it's to fix one well and to basically seal off the other one.
Yeah, the other one. So they're gonna ground it all the way down? I think is what they've talked about in the past. And you can do that to an existing?
Right.
That can be done to an existing well?
It sounds like it, with the well, the casing, sand and sediment hits it and wears it out over time. The pump is obviously still working because it's still pumping. But they're probably gonna put a new sleeve in, a new, all-new piping going down.
It's, we have, all of these departments have provided details on all of this. We can share all of that stuff with you, but it's a really thick packet. So it's up to you how much of it you want to see or whatever you have questions about.
I know with the wells, there's, as they age, there is an ongoing problem with seepage. Amount of groundwater pollution we have in this county, that's a serious health risk. I understand why they're.
You said fix this thing.
That's right. Which should consist of a new sleeve, for the most part.
I didn't hear about the boiler blowing up. What was the story on that? What does that mean?
Boiler?
Yeah.
The elementary school boiler just stopped working one night. And that was.
Stopping working is different than blowing up, fragments going everywhere.
It was unreparable, so I, the Board of Supervisors used the word blowing up, so I don't know exactly.
If I was looking for money, that's the word I would use.
I'm sure that's a technical term of art, blow up, but.
It's called insurance fraud.
All right. Well, boilers, I'm familiar with boilers. Had seven of them over at the company I ran and it was an ongoing thing where we'd have to shut one down every once in a while and get the boiler gang to come in, pull it apart, put it back together. Anyway, I'm curious, is this as critical as blowing up? Blowing up seems.
It stopped working entirely.
Yeah.
And they said it was irreparable. So that's already taken care of and they got that fixed up nicely. The question we posed is, what else is gonna blow up?
Are there other boilers?
Are there other boilers? It's the air conditioning units and so on, and there are a lot.
Yeah. Maintenance is ongoing. It's gonna happen.
Exactly.
And we need, the county needs to look at funding it as an ongoing.
Right.
We just haven't done it. Have to bite the bullet somehow.
Mileage, mileage on the vehicles, you were saying a hundred thousand miles? I would think that depending on who's using, what vehicle it's used for, like a police car or buses and stuff like that, I don't look at a hundred thousand miles as being very, very high. But I'm all for the police department, sheriffs and all. If they say they need it, I'm with them a hundred percent. But I do know. I would think that mileage is acceptable, a certain amount, more so than our automobiles and trucks that we've got.
Given around here, that you don't have a lot of stop-and-go driving, and I think people are really good about getting out of the way, I don't think a hundred is necessarily a large amount of mileage.
They're all over a hundred. Some are over two-hundred.
Two-hundred?
They're looking to cycle out to two-hundred.
How many are over two-hundred?
I don't remember that. I do remember the sheriff saying.
Police has some appeal to it.
They can't just look at mileage. Because those cars idle, if they're, if they're on a traffic stop for twenty minutes, their car is running, that twenty minutes. They rarely turn the vehicles off.
And the average police, police car will run eight hours straight.
Right, that's.
Without, just idling, traffic accident or whatever.
I never understood that. Why do they, why do they do that?
Not the sheriff. I don't know.
No, I mean, I just.
But I mean.
The often is, are keeping the lights going and I don't, I don't want the deputy to be sitting there freezing.
Yeah, you want hot or cold.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's just this county. I think it's the nature of law enforcement.
Yeah.
The vehicles.
I've seen it a million times in a lot of different places and I never understood it. That's why I'm asking.
Truck drivers notoriously would leave their trucks running all the time. That's when fuel was fifty cents a gallon. Now it's five, six times that.
You're dating yourself.
Well, well, school buses, you talk about, we need to replace school buses over so many years. Hell, when I was going, before I went to school, bus number nine was running. I was a kid, I could see it going by. I went to school, rode that bus, and after I got out of school, that bus was still running. So you can do preventative maintenance and keep things going.
True, they are.
But I don't know, that's just, I'm getting too old.
We got the odometer readings for every vehicle. And it's just, the numbers are just.
And they are replacing.
To your point, some of, being over a hundred is not the dividing line here. The sheriff wants to replace two cars. It's gonna be the ones over two-twenty-five.
I thought that was part of the plan. The reason why I'm sort of focused on this is that going back to when I served on the CIP, that was the game plan, replace two a year.
Still are.
And I don't know, did that get funded by the Board of Supervisors?
What?
The sheriffs?
They got the revision last year, I think.
Yeah, they got, they got.
In some instances, it was okayed, but it wasn't funded. And that's a large part of the problem. A lot of things they saw needed to be done, they okayed it, but the money wasn't there to do it.
Well, you know, we are talking about, just on this laundry list, we're talking about a fairly substantial county-wide real estate tax increase. And there are an awful lot of people in this county. Property owners, but you know, it's one of these things. They're on fixed incomes like minimal social security. And a tax increase is a big deal for them.
Look for other sources of revenue.
Yeah.
And there are, you know, there are.
There's other money on that. Biden will give you anything you want. We should take out loans. That's it. We'll call them school loans.
Is the sheriff's department fully staffed, at twenty-one deputies?
He said they're looking for a couple, he said they're, they've got to help one and offer two at this point.
So they need additional vehicles there too, possibly, I guess.
I don't think so.
They switch out, is that what they do?
Exactly.
Couple of years, yeah.
They don't run, I mean, they don't have everybody on the road at the same time, all the time.
Are the deputies driving them home?
With the county, this county and I think most other county sheriff's offices.
Yeah, I used to down my road too.
Significantly lower than the local cities. A lot of people leave to go to, say, Capahan and get a pay raise.
I do see them parked in.
Yeah, so I would think everybody would need a car if they were letting them take them home, but.
I don't think we have twenty-one cars though.
Yeah. Who did the format of all this putting us together?
Yeah, you did a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did.
I think it's very easy to see and the way that it's put up.
Write this down. You should have seen what we started with. Drew had a comprehensive spreadsheet, but it was like three-point-five. This is twelve.
Looks good.
This you can actually read.
And it's got, all that, all those numbers all, to add up are all automated in here too. So you'll be able to see it and play with it. So as I, as requested, and we certainly would anyway, we'll share this document with you immediately. I'll do it tonight when I get home. Supporting documentation is all there.
I don't think we need it. I've seen how thick these are.
It's very thick. It's entirely up to you.
Believe me, you don't want it. It's two-hundred-and-five pages.
No, but I mean, knowing that they're available sort of solves that problem.
Right, for sure.
But I, you know.
And if you have a chance, you know, I went down to the elementary school because I, I knew about the problem anyway and just see what they're talking about, just, just to understand, get a grasp of what the county is facing. And because with all the regulations from OSHA, with all, you still have individuals that will sue the driver of a hat for little or nothing. It's like school buses, even though they're aged with no seatbelts, you know? You just can't say, sit down and behave yourself. It doesn't happen like that anymore. But those buses are old and they do stop and go an awful lot. And I think that the maintenance department has done a pretty good job of piecing things together because that's what we've been doing over the last several years. We've been piecing things together.
Yep.
Because we understood the position that the county was in. You can't spend what you don't have. And, and that's where we are right now. I don't see a pie in the sky anywhere, but I do see this real estate assessment coming and it's not pretty.
No, it's gonna hurt a lot of people. That's why I keep coming back to, you know, moving, moving money around within the school budget, for example. Don't get the impression they do that voluntarily.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions or recommended changes, I move that this be presented to the planning commission for public hearing to be scheduled as soon as possible.
And second, any second? Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Anybody online that opposes? All right, we're fine. Should be interesting.
Is it, should you ask whoever's out there if they have any comments or is it not necessary to do it now?
Well, no, no problem. If you're online, if you have a comment, you're free to make a statement. Probably not a declaration, but a statement. Anybody online? Anybody? Yes?
Hi, I'm Robert Buller. I'm the executive director for the Economic Development Commission. What a great breakdown of the costing I saw. One question I have with respect to the school requirements, is there a way that we can get money through the Virginia lottery funding? And the reason I say is that I saw that Northumberland County received over five-hundred-thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-three. That's my question. Thank you.
I don't know the answer to that, but having been involved with the lottery funding in Michigan while I worked for the legislature up there, lottery funding typically is a large sum of money that comes in, goes directly into the school, what do they call it? The school formula. And it is not a source of grants. It is part of the school formula that funds schools based on a formula, based on population, income and so forth.
And it is, right, and it is still the same in Virginia. It's all calculated in Richmond and Richmond does what it wants.
But don't they put it out to the counties based on population, student population?
Yeah, they use a composite, they use a composite fund. And if you understand that composite fund, according to the composite fund, Northumberland is very well off. They can afford to do whatever they want to do according to their composite index, which they have been trying to change and address for several years and they haven't gotten to give them.
The real estate values in this county and in Lancaster.
That's correct.
Don't reflect the student population and the families of those students who are typically much, much lower income than retirees gazing at the water.
Oh, absolutely. Northumberland and Lancaster County are probably the two oldest counties in the country as far as geriatric population.
Yep.
So.
But they're also two of the wealthiest counties.
That's correct.
In the state on paper.
That's right.
The reality of that county-wide isn't there. But those are the numbers that are usually in Richmond.
Absolutely correct.
So, good job. If I could get a copy of that.
Philip?
Okay. Did you want to work on the addressing solar energy in the comprehensive plan or?
Skip over that.
We did skip over it, right? Okay. All right.
Sure. I spoke with Mr. McKenzie about it and one thing that we need to discuss is in regards to our growth areas and in those support areas with those. And if we want, if we want to allow for more growth by having an additional setback off of those growth areas or the support areas for solar facilities.
Can I suggest something? Lancaster just went through this whole process of coming up with a long-term plan for their county and one of the interesting ways that it would, it sounds like, I haven't read it yet, but it seems to differ from Thumblund in that they have identified, I think, a total of six areas that affect economic development within the county. And, you know, it covers everything from education to roads to you name it, broadband access. Those things are really not addressed. Our, our comprehensive plan, what is addressed time and time and time again is preserving the rural character of the county, which I am told sends a signal to businesses. Or Thumblund, it really isn't interested. Says the same thing to real estate developers. So I'm wondering if it's not time, because basically what we've done is we've taken a comprehensive plan that dates back to the nineteen-seventies, probably fifty years old at this point. Really need to look at it and think about redoing it top to bottom. Like, like a school bus or a police car, I think it, school boiler, it may have reached its limit.
To do the call, we have to.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, we have to, like, just finish it up. But all that really is, all that really is, is a sort of, I don't know, Band-Aid treatment of pre-existing plans going back into the nineteen-seventies. Might be time. I would like to get copies of what they've done in Lancaster. All a function of the reportage of the rap-hannock record, which occasionally is lessened.
This is their comprehensive plan?
Yes.
If we want copies?
Yeah. Like to in the, not this week, but last week's news.
And it will be valuable because we do have to address solar facilities in our comprehensive plan with this update, so.
We should address it immediately this year. I'm, but if we're gonna really redo the comprehensive plan, that's gonna be a major.
This was the year we were supposed to be redoing the comprehensive.
He just hasn't got to it yet.
That's, that's our job for this year was to redo the comprehensive. Every five years, I think, and we're already past.
So the number one item on our next meeting should be to address, to start addressing the comprehensive plan?
I am concerned, perhaps unreasonably, but so much of what we're doing with regard to solar energy is conditioned on what the final county regulations look like. Hold off on inserting that into the comprehensive plan until Board of Supervisors has had the final word on it. Might be premature to do it now as well.
Yeah, but the Board of Supervisors hadn't taken this up yet, so the timing seems to be on our side. Assuming we get going on the comprehensive plan.
But, I mean, I think it does have to be worked.
We've already done about half the comprehensive plan. Five-year reviews. There's not much left. Now, the addition of the solar installations, I think, would be useful. But what I'm getting to is getting the comprehensive plan has amended this year chronically a number of years to sort of rework it and modernize it. I think we ought to consider doing.
Useful timing, as we discussed at the last meeting. I've been participating with the Economic Development Commission. They're about to redo the strat, strategic plan as well. I think that's why Mr. Johnson's here to work with us.
That's one of the reasons. There's a little bit of overlap or rather dependencies between the two organizations. It's kind of a circular discussion, who, who sets the groundwork where, when, so that the other one can respond. Pick your group, planning commissioner, EDC. So the lines that separate our responsibilities aren't as clean, so it's.
They're not intended to be, just as long as everybody involved in the process understands that. I think it's important going forward that ongoing consultative process at the level of these two boards.
Yeah, I agree.
What you don't want is a situation where one board recommends X and the other board recommends Y.
Exactly. Have to do with that. That would be embarrassing.
Now, for about three years or thereabouts, the Economic Development Commission, not inactive, was doing a very good imitation thereof.
Yeah.
So, it was, glad that you're breathing some life into it.
We actually had a very good discussion at the last meeting just earlier this week. We had a couple of watermen in along with Mr. Williams and, uh, had a little chat about, and he didn't bring food either. I was a little disappointed.
You know, we gotta do something.
No samples?
Exactly. But we talked about, you know, so what are the challenges that watermen face here? And, and the number one issue of everyone we've spoken with has been labor force. Nobody wants to work. And.
Land or sea.
That's true.
So ultimately, if this county is being held back from growth, not just by regulation, but the lack of a, of active labor force, a willing labor force. You know, I, I made the sort of the off the hand, probably inappropriate comment. Maybe we need to call Governor Abbott, having, having buses some immigrants up here.
Yeah, I've thought of that a long time.
But, uh, I mean, that's not a problem that's within the jurisdiction of either the planning commission or the Economic Development Commission. It belongs to the schools and they, and, you know, who knows what we need to do about that?
Also seeing, at least over the last ten years, a major influx of Hispanic people in this county. And that, to me, is just sort of a natural outgrowth of normal economic forces. My experience with them has been universally quite good. They.
Yes.
They work hard. They don't get in trouble for the most part.
One of my best employees, Hispanic, I can't understand a word she says.
But it gets done.
But she shows up and she anticipates what needs to be done, and if she's in question, she'll look at me. I'm going, and she takes right on, it's just, uh, they're, they're made, they've got a great work ethic. They show up on time.
And I imagine, and this has been the case with, uh, what's his name? The guy that runs the seafood down in Loxford. I'm having a break.
Lakey Coward?
Coward.
Lakey Coward, yes, gosh.
Yeah.
Every year, multi-generational employees from a couple of villages in Mexico.
Yep.
And he had, his biggest problem is getting the permit.
H one B visas. We talked about that the other night.
Permits and you need housing.
Gotcha, every year. But he wants them, and they do a good job for him.
So with the comprehensive plan, we're going to start from the beginning or start where we left off at?
No, we've got to finish.
We got, okay.
Five-year cycle this year. I don't think there's much left to it.
Okay. So would you remind Stuart that we're just going to just complete all things that we haven't finished before? Because we went through it, we, we've been going through it every year, but we've taken a year or two off from just dealing with it. We just.
My understanding, it has to be done. We have to look at it every five years.
Yes.
I have never seen that happen. I don't know how long I've been on the board, but I have never seen it in five years.
I think we're over.
He said we're over. We, that's why we have to address it this year.
I'm not saying that's acceptable, but that's.
Right.
Reality.
And it's not like we haven't been working hard. We haven't had a meeting off in, in two years. We used to occasionally get a, oh, no meeting this month. They were like, very bad.
Okay. Philip, do you have anything else?
That's all we have for, for work session.
Do you have a Board of Supervisors' report?
Yes, sir. Um, they, they approved the boat canopies defined and, and as presented or as recommended by the planning commission. So, so that is new as a conditional use permit. There was a public hearing on, on cargo containers on Newman's Neck Road for two of those, um, and they did approve those with conditions. They approved a new tax date, which they moved up a month to now November fifth. And then a new planning commission member was appointed and a new wetland board member was appointed.
New?
Or, I agree, new. A new. New, new on both. Alan Garland for the planning commission and Spencer Hidley for the wetland board.
For the what?
Wetland board.
Okay. Alan Garland, who are you? Sheriff.
Sheriff.
Major.
Major.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask a?
Sure.
Question on the, uh, uh, solar facilities. How much longer do you, do you see that, uh, it's going to take before the first permit can be approved? If, if things are tracking out like they are, and we'll probably have some.
I mean, the, the last revision that we did, the Board of Supervisors adopted, so at, at no point have, have solar companies been denied the right to apply. So, so that application process is still there and, and I'm not holding on to any applications.
So we don't have anything in the pipeline right now?
Correct.
Right after they changed the law in Virginia, requiring utilities to basically buy it from anybody with a solar farm. We had a couple of requests that filtered down to the planning commission, and that's how, how we got into this process. There haven't been any since then. As part of the normal process, the utility, the two utility companies involved have fairly strict requirements in terms of what you need to show them before they'll go ahead with the disposal. They still have to come back to, usually the Board of Supervisors, to get the permit to actually start construction. I don't think any of that has occurred in the last five years.
Had three public hearings on them and all three of them were turned down last year.
I have been requested to do a resource protection area delineation on a farm that's being, that the potential is there to propose solar. I think that's why they're asking me to do the delineation, but I, there's still no.
And there's no, nobody waiting to have a public hearing?
There's nobody in the pipeline, but I'm.
A lot more attractive than us right now.
They're, uh, but that's apparently stalled out somehow. I, I'm not sure.
I, I mean, with the big one at Mayon Road, I think that might have slowed things down a little bit.
And they've slowed that one down now. That, that thing was just completely out of hand, but, uh, so they've slowed that one down, but it's, it's, it's still enormous already.
And the one down off Ridge Road, but in, on the Lancaster side, has that, has construction on that been ongoing, or is it?
That's the one where.
It's up with Miss McCounty. It, actually, Miss McCounty.
No, I was talking about Lancaster, the one in Lancaster County.
Not familiar with that one over there. Is it over there near the Carrot, Carrotama, Carrotama River or?
No, it's actually, uh, right above Ridge Road. And it's almost when you get to the, well, it's just past the Richmond County line, but it's in Lancaster. And it's, uh, basically being built to.
Okay. I, I've got, I gotta go look at that. I haven't seen that.
Okay. Well, I, I haven't seen, heard, heard of anything about it in a while, so that may be stalled out. I don't know why.
It, it is difficult, especially in Northumberland, when people, it has to be an easier process for them to be denied before they spend
ten, hundred thousand dollars or something.
Yeah.
Because that, that, that leaves a bitter taste in, in businesses' mouths, and no business is going to want to come. First of all, like I always said, you don't have an industrial park, but nobody wants a business right beside them in, in Northumberland. So, Northumberland is caught between a rock and a hard place, and the citizens are going to have to toll the bill. I, I just, I just can't see it. But I just hate it when someone says they've spent, you know, fifty, a hundred thousand dollars just to get the approval process, and the approval process then gets denied. It just doesn't make good.
One of the things that's an ongoing problem, and I, and I hope this has changed since Governor Youngkin got elected, but the DMV was just merciless. Fellows, a couple, some years back.
Yeah.
Elf who built an exit ramp for a real estate office, for God's sake.
Uh, you know, it, it's, it's just that we have to become business friendly. And things that we do need to be, to attract people. I mean, um, our students, our children don't want to stay here after they get through high school because there is nothing here, because we refuse to be progressive in our thinking. We're more retro.
Well, if you look at.
Reactive.
If you look at a diagram of a population spread in this county, it looks just like an hourglass. Ten to forty, very limited. After that, and when you add in the retirees, it sort of broadens out, and then you've got the younger families and, and children. There's really nothing in the middle, and a lot of that has to do with the absence of employment, which is, you know, it's all kind of circular. We don't have a terribly employment-ready workforce. That's changed though. I mean, our schools haven't been turning up like they used to, you know, in our generation.
Well, I mean, and I, I understand, and I, I understand what you're saying, but in order to get, you gotta have, you know.
Well, it's all catch twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Right. And, and, so, so, you know, I know people that commute to Washington four days a week, five days a week.
I've never understood, but I know it happens.
And, um, you know, and it does happen because of the money. They, they want to live in the country, but they don't want the, they, they do what they have to do, you know, so.
They're leaving like at four o'clock in the morning.
That's correct. Get back about seven. Yep. Anything else for the commission? Anything else?
Over adjourned. Second.
Second. Oh, are we all right? Okay.
We're adjourned.
Okay.